Can you hear me now? I knew we'd eventually get this thing working, right? All right, I'd like to bring the regular, regular, uh, meeting to order. This is the June 24th. I'd like to introduce Bob Schwartz, who represents Bowling Green. Leon Smith, who represents Reedy Church. Dr. Carol Horton, who represents Fort Royal. Visel Minor, who represents Mattupanai. Gary Dudley, who represents Western Caroline. And I'm George Weaver, and I represent Madison. We have on, on our Zoom, we have, boy, now this is really loud. We have our county attorney via Zoom, that's Chris McKenzie. We have Craig Pennington, who's our planner. And Lisa Zek, who is our administrative assistant and planning tech. Think I got that all right. I'd like it all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please. Now, I'd like to have a motion as the board looked at the minutes from January 7th and April 22nd. Any problems?
No, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the limits of January 7th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Second motion, Visel, for April.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the April minute.
Go ahead, second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Now, we're gonna have the public hearings tonight, but we've changed things a little bit because the two motions that we're gonna address have asked to defer. So at this particular time, we're gonna first go into the public hearing for motion to accept the applicant's request to defer CPA 01-2021 to August 26th, 2021, regular meeting.
I'll make a motion. Whereas the general welfare and good zoning practice warrants, I move to defer CPA 01-2021 to August, the next meeting for further discussion.
Second.
Sir.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Now, we're gonna go into the next deferral, which is motion to accept the applicant's request to defer RZ 03-2021 to August 26th, 2020, run, regular meeting. I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, whereas the general welfare and good zoning practices warrant, I move to defer RZ 03-2021 for August 24th meeting to the next meeting for further.
Okay, 26th, okay.
Second.
Your second, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Now, before I get into this situation, I am gonna have to recuse myself from this next application, SPX 02-2021. Because as an architect, I have done work for these clients that are submitting this application. And based on my discussions with our attorney, we feel that there will be a conflict of interest here. Based on the involvement with the application as required by Virginia Conflict of Interest Act, I am now recusing myself for this application. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
I can't do that. I don't wanna take you.
Now you're, now you're in charge.
Okay, good evening to everyone. First, we're gonna have the public protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Members of the commission, the purpose of a public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer comment, they need to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comment. Applicants or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 15 minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. After the public hearing has been closed, the applicant or representatives of the applicant will be allowed 10 minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you. Can I staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. First case tonight is SPEX 02-2021. Applicants requesting special exception to allow for a smaller lot size than what is permitted under Article 12, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance. The applicant Hidden Farm Estates LLC is seeking special exception permit approval to reduce the minimum lot size below that is currently permitted in the R1 zoning district under Article 12, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance. The current approved lot size in Bridalwood is 15,000 square feet. If approved, the average lot size would be reduced to approximately 9,533 square feet. Bridalwood's Section 3, 4, and 5, aka also known as Kauf Village, is approved for 112 lots. This application would, with its smaller lot size, permit up to 187, resulting in 75 additional lots. And, but no increase in density. An increase in density would require rezoning. The applicant is proposing to construct the second entrance to Bridalwood at the previously approved location. V dot comment of the turn lane should be added for both entrances to Bridalwood, along with the same, some design comments. There's a concern that the existing roads in Bridalwood may not have been designed to handle the extra traffic. Copy of V dot comments are included in the packet. Paragraph F of Article 15, Section 16 states, "The resulting lot layout shall promote pedestrian access." The G D P provided does not identify sidewalks, pedestrian facilities, or accessibility to the park and open space provided by this design, and needs to be addressed for compliance with the standard. While going over the comments, the applicant has provided a new G D P that addresses the pedestrian comment from the planning department. They have added in sidewalks to the pocket parks, and sidewalks along Lady Smith Road is requested by V dot. As for the V dot comment for, that's in your staff report, we got clarification from V dot, and Mike Fincham, the director, and I spoke. They are only requiring turn lanes for the new entrance, not the old entrance. The other turn lane that V dot is speaking of is for Countryside Lane, and the county does not feel that we can force the applicant to build a turn lane for Countryside Lane, which is not part of their proposal. So the V dot comments and the planning comments have been addressed to some point at this time of the meeting. The Caroline County Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as residential low density, consistent with the R1 residential zoning designation of the property. Low-density residential use of the property is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The next part of the staff report has the zoning regulations set forth for special exception permits that you have seen on previous special exceptions applied for. And so those are the same as every special exception that's come to you guys. Under those, in addition to the general standards referenced above, Article 15 Supplemental Regulations, Section 16, authorizes the board supervisors may approve a development standards waiver of the requirements set forth in Article 12 of the residential zoning districts if the board supervisors determines that a reduction in or waiver of such requirements would result in a development that better promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the public than a conventional development permitted under the existing regulation. The following regulations under that statement are what applies for this special exception. And so letters A through J would need, would need to be addressed in this application to make it valid for the special exception. Staff has offered suggested conditions following the two which shall be recorded in the clerk of court within 30 days. Development shall be constructed in substantial conformance to the G D P dated March 22nd, 2021, that date has now changed. Low-impact development techniques shall be used when feasible. Stormwater management ponds, if needed, shall be designed to reflect naturally occurring water bodies, not square engineered depressions. No chain link fencing shall be used for security fencing around the stormwater management ponds. Minimize overlot grading and clear cutting to the greatest extent possible. And where pot, where actions are required, replant and landscape with native plant species. Utilize traditional neighborhood design techniques for the development, and in particular, as it relates to landscaping within the development. A 10-foot landscape buffer shall be placed to the rear of all lots abutting exterior parcels. No more than 63 lots may be planted in a 12-month period, and so that would phase this development out three years. And left turn deceleration lanes will be provided at the intersections of South Village Drive, Lady Smith Road, Bridalwood Lane, Lady Smith Road, as required by V dot. And again, that V dot comment was that only one would be required at the new entrance, not Bridalwood Lane. Staff is also suggesting a 10th condition that is not in your staff report, and that condition is that all construction traffic shall use the newly designed entrance and not enter off of Bridalwood Lane. And so staff is suggesting that you add that condition to the conditions upon a motion.
That'd be number 10, correct?
That would be condition number 10, if you chose to add that one. This neighborhood was currently approved approximately 2008, about, about 2008. And so 112 lots can be built now with an approved plan. The applicant is asking to add these 75 lots. The layout of the previous subdivision did not require the pedestrian accessibility or the parks and common areas, such as required with this plan. And so if they go to build the previously approved neighborhood, they would only get 112 lots, but we would have no sidewalks and no parks for the, for the subdivision itself. So this layout does add 75 lots, but it provides multiple pocket parks, which could be turned into picnic areas or tot lots or things like that, and does provide pedestrian access in the form of a sidewalk that we're going to speak with the applicant to expand.
So you're saying there was no sidewalks before? And that it's, it's an increase to 187 homes?
Yes, it's an increase of 75 lots. The previous subdivision did not have any sidewalks and did not have any of the pocket parks that you see on your plan, which could be utilized for playgrounds for neighborhood kids or picnic areas for neighborhood residents, or any type of use like that.
The common areas?
Uh, not the common areas, the pocket parks that are inside the neighborhood. You'll see there's a couple lots that are labeled as pocket parks. I believe there's five? Uh, six.
Who would maintain those?
The eight, once it was turned over to the HOA, the H, they would be common area just like the other common areas shown on the plans. The HOA would maintain them.
No questions? Is it? Thank you.
Welcome.
Uh, application for presentation. Just here. Want to speak?
Are you able to hear me? So, my name is Justin Boynton. I live at 154 South Main Street in Bowling Green. Our family would be the developer here. And so just, we're kinda using the comp plan as developers, as our guiding light. We feel like with these improvements, able to condense these lots a little bit, generate these common areas, these pocket parks, these sidewalks, is just gonna create a more livable subdivision. And that's our goal to, to develop it in this, in this way, as guided by the comp plan. And again, if there's any questions, I can answer after comments, I gladly will.
The applicant provided full-size copies of the G D P that I gave you at the beginning of the meeting, so I'm gonna give you the full-size copies that have color on them, so you might be able to see them a little bit better.
Go ahead, open them.
You can go ahead and open them publicly.
Now, we open up the public hearing. Anybody want to speak? On this application? Once, twice? Open, close. There. Any questions?
Mr. Vice Chair, I would like to speak to the applicant again, if you please. I'm sorry, sir, I did not catch your last name.
Okay, no, my name is Justin Boynton.
Boynton.
Yes, S B O Y N T O N, thank you.
Mr. Boynton, I commend you on the upgrades for the parks and the sidewalks. I sincerely do. I, I've got some concerns. It does not meet with our comp plan, a, as you well know. The initial G D P that was submitted called for lots of more or less 15,000 square feet. Am I correct in that, sir?
I wanna make sure I'm answering completely accurately. We mean the, the previously approved?
Yes, sir.
Subdivision versus what we've submitted most recently that's tied into this?
Yes, sir.
The previous one, I believe, had lot sizes of averaging 15,000 square feet. Am I accurate in that?
Yes, sir, that, that's according to the literature that I've been providing.
Yes, sir.
So if I misspeak, please.
Oh, no, and that's.
Correct me.
No, you will be correct. I wanna make sure I'm saying things correctly.
All right. Now, 15,000 square feet is approximately one-third of an acre. Okay, I'm just telling you mathem, or I'm just submitting that mathematically, that's the way that it works out. Now, the homes that you contemplate building here are nice homes. If I recall correctly, they are in the 300,000 and up range?
That, that's correct. I just, I don't wanna. Nasticate about the future of the house market, but that would seem very reasonable. Yes, sir.
Right, I'm not holding you to, to any sales figures at all. Some of the lots are 6,600 square feet, according to the, the information that was previously provided, as well as what has been presented tonight. If you look down here, 78, 79, 80, and so forth. And granted, there, there's some variation in lot sizes. When you get down to 6,600 square feet, you're speaking of approximately one-sixth of an acre. And I, I'm not trying to nitpick on anything. I don't want to see homes built here in Caroline County that are on such small lots that you could practically reach out and hand your neighbor a cup of coffee through the kitchen window. So that, that's what I'm concerned about, I'll be honest with you. As well as it not being in conformity with the low density, which is where it is now. And the previous plans, it was within those, those parameters of low density. And I just don't wanna see a, a subdivision pop up and all of a sudden we, we've got sardines living in a can. That's my concern, because I think we have a very beautiful county. Picturesque, and it, we do have viable, vibrant little communities and so forth, which I encourage. I, I want to see that. I just don't want us to wind up being elbow-to-elbow with our neighbor. And I think if we start straying away from a plan that has been previously thought out, planned, and passed, that we may start getting into some trouble in that area. And that's just my concern.
Mr. Schwartz, could I, could I jump in for a second?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna make sure that everything is stated correctly and right terms are being used.
Yes, sir.
So, one, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It does meet the comprehensive plan. And the density isn't changing. The density, even though there's more lots, the density is staying the same because of the amount of common area and parks that are in here. And so all the acreage of the common areas and the parks are calculated into the total acreage of the neighborhood. And so when you take the lots and the common areas, add them together and do the calculation, then it still meets the density. If it didn't meet the density, they would not be able to apply for this application. The only reason they can apply for this application is because it still meets the density because of all the open, because of all the open space that they have.
All right. Mr. Penzer, I'm, I'm looking at the request. And it says that the applicant is requesting a special exception to allow for a smaller lot size than what is permitted under Article 12, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance.
Correct. They're asking for a smaller lot size, not smaller density.
And the Caroline County Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as residential low density, consistent with the R1 residential zoning designation of the property. Low-density residential use of the property is consistent with the comp plan.
It is.
And if I'm confused, please, just straighten me out.
Right, so it is consistent, because this is still considered low density. And it is, yes. And, um, so it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and they're not changing the density because of, if you, if you were to take the old neighborhood without all the common areas and the larger lot sizes, then the density matches the same density here. I believe if 3.1, three, right around three. Yeah, three houses per acre is what the density is in R1.
Right.
And so with their com, with their common areas and their pocket parks, they still only average three houses per acre.
Okay.
And there may be a math explanation I can give briefly, if that's helpful.
Yes, sir. I, I guess my, my real question is, are we adding more dwellings?
We are. We are adding more dwellings, but it doesn't change the density.
Okay.
If it's helpful, and I cha, I get challenged with that as well, just, and I don't mean this in any kind of rebuttal kind of way, just maybe a clear. So we have 64.17 acres. So to fall under this low-density umbrella, we would multiply that 64.17 by the number that's slightly over 3, and that would be, based on the comp plan, the maximum density that could be allowed in order to fall under the comp plan and the goals established in it. So if we multiply the total acreage by that, that number just over 3, that gets us a number that's over, just slightly over, the total lots we have. And that's why we can say we're not changing the density such that it's outside of what would be classified as low density, according to the comp plan.
Okay, that, that, that does clear it up for me.
Yeah, and so if you had 15,000 square foot lots, then you're getting three houses on the, that acre, right? So if you decrease the lot size to 6,000 or 7,000, and now you have six houses in there on one acre. But then you have a common area of another acre with no houses on it. Then those six houses on those two acres equal the same density. And so with all their vacant land here, it keeps the same density.
I try, and I guess what I'm understanding is that you're using the common areas as a balancing act.
Yes, that's correct. We use, they, they're using the common areas and the parks. And so if they, if they build to the old plan, the density is still 3. And they get larger lot sizes, but no parks, no picnic areas, anything like that. With this new plan, they have smaller lot sizes, but then they have community areas, such as playgrounds, picnic areas, things like that, that the community can use. And so the density stays the same because of those lots that will not be built on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Boynton, I appreciate the clarification.
Oh, no, I appreciate your patience, and thank you so much for explaining that so clearly. And again, just as far as information, not in any combative way, relative to lots being too tiny, this being unlivable as far as proximity to your neighbor. Again, just as a touchstone, and that's what we use when we kinda laid this out, a lot of the lots right in the neighboring Lady Smith Village are actually smaller than some of these. And then again, so just, so sometimes these numbers may seem tinier than they actually are. And so we've, we've built in Lady Smith Village, we know we're gonna be able to achieve a quality home with side yards that's livable, just for reference.
Thank you. And I guess what brings it all to mind, just so you know, I'm not trying to nitpick. Uh, I go down Atlee Station Road in Hanover County quite frequently. And they have subdivisions popping out of trees in Hanover. Some of the houses there are 3, 400,000 dollar, I mean, beautiful homes. But you, like I say, you could practically pass a cup of coffee out to your neighbor through the window. And, and I'm going, you're gonna build a beautiful home like this in a sardine can? It, it just boggles my mind. And that's what I don't want to see here.
Yes, sir.
So.
Right, so there's no requests, it's, you know, waiving of setback requirements or, or anything like that. I know, I appreciate your point.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Schwartz and the members of the planning commission, I, I might be able to just lay the groundwork a little bit from a legal perspective, just so you understand what's before you. So this is a special exception application, but it's a little unlike the ones that you normally get where there are uses by right in a district, and then there are uses that are allowed by special exception. This one's a little different in that what we're doing here is, under section or Article 12 of the zoning ordinance, it has a table, and that table spells out the minimum numbers for each district. So in the R1 district where we are, Article 12 says that the minimum lot size has to be 15,000 square feet, and sets out the setback of 40 feet and the side yard of 15 feet and the rear yard of 35 feet. And what's before you tonight is a special exception application to reduce just that minimum lot size from 15,000 square feet to allow for the sizes of lots that they're proposing in there. From fifteen thousand square feet to allow for the sizes of lots that they're proposing in their application. But that's the only change to the minimum. The other, the side yards, the setbacks are not changing. They're the same. Uh, in this application as it would be without a special exception. Um, and the other important aspect of that is, the only way to get the special exception, uh, under Article twelve of your zoning ordinance. Uh, is to make sure you keep the same density. So, that's why they have the pocket parks, so the discussion that you just heard. Um, even with the reduction of minimum lot size, um, they can't increase the density. So, hopefully that is just a helpful framing discussion of what's before you tonight. So, it's a special exception application to reduce the minimum lot size from fifteen thousand to what's shown in your packet.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. You helped clear the fog.
Uh, Mr. Pennington, um, do, do we have access tonight of the original plat?
I, I don't have ac- I don't have access to it tonight. Uh, well, actually.
I'd like to see that.
Okay.
And, um. I don't know if I'm, uh, uh, Mr. McKenzie will tell me whether or not I can ask this question. So, I just wondered if with the, I mean, you're saying this was two thousand three was the original plat?
Uh, well, the neighborhood never actually got platted on this side. It was approved with, with, with construction plans. And they could go platted tomorrow and start to, start building it.
Because the question is, in two thousand three, did it have any proffers with it? But I don't know if I'm allowed to ask that or not.
It was, it wa- it was more like two thousand eight. And. Yeah, it wa- it was a by-right subdivision. There was no rezoning, none of, none of that. It was, they went in and they built what they were allowed to build.
Because, um, you know. I understand, and, and it's, you know, nice to have these pocket parks and all. I- if, if, you know, the, uh, community comes together and maintains and stuff. But, um, with seventy-five new houses, we do have to consider that we're probably adding at least a hundred and fifty kids to our school. Because you average two or three kids per house. I think it's two-point-five in the United States.
Yeah, actually, in the county, uh, the trends over the last couple years is our population is going up, and our school population is going down. And so, it, they, the kids aren't going to the schools.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily a prediction of the future.
Right, but what I'm, what I'm saying is I don't think.
I, I'm pretty sure our school population's going to go up in the future.
Well, yeah, what I'm saying is that you can't really count on two kids per house with the trends that we've been seeing.
But we will be adding, I mean, with seventy-five additional houses, we will be adding to our school, so. You know, that's just a consideration, too. So, are, are we allowed to see the original plat?
Uh, you would have to defer it, because I, I don't have access to it right now.
Oh, okay. I thought, um, Miss X said she had.
No, it's not in there.
Not in.
Mr. Horton, just that, everybody, you certainly are entitled. You're, there's no problem with you looking at that. Uh, but, but like Mr. Pennington said, you would, since you don't have it available, you'd have to defer in order to have it shown to you at the, at the next meeting in August.
Chairman, I have a couple of, I don't have any concerns. I think I, I like what I see here. And the reason I like what I see is the fact that you're putting homes on less land, not destroying. Trees and all the things that, uh, wildlife gather in. Uh, my only concern is, uh, the entrance at Bridlewood now is, in my opinion, a little dangerous because of the level of road. You've got a, an incline going up, coming east, and then a little dip on, still going east on the other side of the road. And I think there've already been two accidents there this year. I don't know, I, I don't know whether you could put a turn lane in both places or move the turn lanes to Bridlewood. But to me, that would be the best thing to do because of the way that road, uh, side.
Where?
V, V dot, V dot.
Put the, uh, turn lane in the U N.
Ladies, on Lady Smith.
On Lady Smith Road, and the, the current entrance is. And there's. It's just a dangerous, you're hard to see over the hills.
V dot, V dot made the comment that a turn lane would be required at the new entrance.
Right.
But that it doesn't meet the requirements to require one at the previous entrance. And, uh, the county doesn't feel that they can force them to put in a turn lane at the existing entrance due to V dot saying it doesn't meet the requirements. Uh, I do agree that it's a tough intersection, but, uh, I don't think that we can make them put that in. And again, um, it, V dot's determination is that both entrances would have the equal number of residents utilizing them, the way the neighborhood has been designed. One is probably not going to be hea- more heavily trafficked than the other one. And so, V dot's recommendation is just a turn lane at the, at the new entrance. Um, but again, like Mr. McKenzie said, um, the only thing that we really can approve or deny or defer tonight is the lot size change.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't deny for that, but I just, my concern is that.
And if, again, not, just as a statement on that, as far as the design, it, again, and subject to your judgment and evaluation. With a lot of the traffic coming from the, the ninety-five side of, of Lady Smith, it, and I think that's what V dot's determination is, too. We're going to have this entrance that, that we're putting in have a, a right and left turn lane, which we. Will likely serve as the pr- the new primary entrance for this subdivision. If you can just imagine, most of the traffic coming from ninety-five is going to encounter this intersection first. That's wider and more conducive to entrance, so. I care about safety, right? I'm not trying to sell you on anything. I just posit that that might actually end up in kind of safer access to the subdivision. Than if it was just left alone, not only that other entrance used.
Mr. Boynton or Mr. Pennington, Pennington, either one. Do we have any input from V dot as to whether or not the intersection that Mr. Boynton is talking about? Would be controlled by a traffic signal, or is it by a stop sign? Do we have any input on?
According to V dot, um, it doesn't meet any type of traffic signal regulations. Um, it just meets a taper, a taper lane to make a right into the neighborhood and a full left turn lane to turn, make a left into the neighborhood. And then a stop sign to exit the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, because I, I was going to say that, that's quite expensive when you start putting in traffic signals.
Any more questions for that? I would rather to make a motion.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'd like to make a motion, please. Where a special exemption request, SPEX zero-two-two-zero-two-one. For South Village appears to be generally consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan and future land use map. And whereas the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, good zoning practices warrants. The approval of this request, I recommend that SPEX zero-two-two-zero-two-one be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
A second.
Um, Mr. Schwartz, that's for clarity, that's with the nine conditions listed and the tenth that Mr. Pennington provided in this report. Is that correct?
Yes, that, that is correct.
Mr. McKenzie, uh, condition number two will have to be changed because of the date of the GDP. And condition number nine would have to be changed due to V dot comments. And so, can we ad- can we make the motion with those conditions to be adjusted?
Or do we, do we know what the changes are right now?
Yeah, the date is the new GDP date, which may change again before the Board of Supervisors, so that we should be able to change. And then the number nine would be turn lanes provided at the new entrance of Bridlewood.
Okay, so, so, members of the planning commission, I, there's before you a vote to recommend approval. Um, based on, um, the nine conditions listed with the following amendment, the following amendments. Um, number two, number two is going to be updated, uh, to reflect the current date of the revised GDP. Uh, number nine, what was the change there, Mr. Pennington?
That turn lanes would be provided at South Village Drive, right and left turn lanes would be provided at South Village Drive. Those would be, those would be the only turn lane improvements.
Gotcha, and then number ten was the additional condition provided at the beginning. So, that's, that is the motion that's before the planning commission, conditions as amended. And actually, Mr. Pennington, would you mind reading number ten again, just for the benefit of the commission, so they recall what they're voting on?
Yes, no problem. Condition ten would be that all construction traffic shall enter and exit through South Village Drive.
Okay, so what we have here on the floor, just for clarification. Mr. Schwartz mo- motions to approve the special exception. With changes to number two, condition number two, current, will change to the current date of the revised GDP. Condition number nine, turn lanes will be provided at South Village Drive, both right and left turn lane. And condition number ten. And Mr. Dudley seconded that motion with those changes. That sound right to everybody?
That would be my motion or amended motion, whichever one is, is correct.
So, now we're at the all-in-favor stage. Say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries. I have one thing under any and all. We have no cases for July, no public hearings, nothing held over, so we do not need to have a July meeting, if that is good with the planning commission. So, you'll be adjourning tonight to the August twenty-sixth meet, regular meeting. That's good with everybody. So, now we can motion to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn to the August meeting.
Second.
Second. May adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, uh, yeah, we're adjourned.